I'd like to call the Order of 1,473th Meeting of the President and Board of Trustees for Majesty Park on this 20th day of May, 2019. Please rise for the invocation given this evening by Pastor Rodney Lyzendorf from First Born Ministry and also pledge allegiance led by trustee Jake Schmidt.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you. We thank you for all the blessings you've bestowed upon our community. We thank you for the prosperity you've given us, Lord. We ask you that tonight you would guide us as we make decisions for our community that would further your will, our will, and the good of our community and people. Lord, we pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please take roll?
I'm going to roll after the motion.
Okay.
Wait, wait. We need to take roll and declare a form, then have a motion to allow electronic attendance.
Okay.
Okay? Because you have to have a form to have that.
Okay.
So take roll.
Take roll. Thank you.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Sykes.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Kid.
Here.
Wilson is absent temporarily. Bailey is absent. Trustee Beck.
Here.
Clerk is present. The attorney is present.
We have a quorum. At this time, I entertain a motion to allow trustee Aaron Wilson to attend remotely.
So made.
Second. Got a motion in second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Trustee Wilson can attend remotely. Thank you.
You're okay with Aaron?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the May 6th board meeting.
So made.
Second.
Got a motion in second, approve the minutes. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes have been approved. Next, we'll have treasurer's report from treasurer Bradley Robison.
Thank you, Your Honor. The treasurer's report as of May 13th, 2019 reflected a total of all funds to be $13,555,882.89. A copy of the report is available at the back of the room. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
So made.
Second.
Motion in second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Treasurer's report has been approved. Next, we'll have communications from clerk Lori Mitchell.
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of things this evening, one saddened, one happy. Tonight, I'm saddened to extend condolences on behalf of the village and myself to my dear friend and fellow clerk Bob Burden, his wife Jane, his mother Vi, and the entire Burden and Nelson families on the death of Bob's father, Robert Burden. Also this evening, I am very pleased, after a year of hard work and great reports, I'm pleased to present a word of recognition to Hannah Herrera for her year of service, and I'm very excited that next year she will be continuing as our student liaison for Harlem High School.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Hannah.
Hannah followed in the footsteps of her brother, who was also our student liaison for two years, who's now a proud graduate and moving on with the Marines. And that's my report, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next, we have the warrant. Trustee Joel Sykes. Oh, it'll be... Sorry?
I'm sorry. Trustee Smith.
Trustee Jake Schmidt.
Thank you, Your Honor. This evening, I present the warrant in the amount of $499,549.41, and I move for their passage.
Second. Got a motion in second to approve the bills? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please take roll call?
Trustee Sykes.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Kid.
Aye.
Wilson. Is Wilson? Bailey's absent. Beck?
Aye.
Five ayes and one absent.
Bills have been approved. Next, I'm going to do administrative reports. First of all, I'm very honored to recognize two individuals for achievement awards for the village of Majesty Park, who'd be Chad Hunter for 20 years of service and Penny Miller for 30 years of service. Could you please meet me down at the podium, both of you, please?
I said to someone previously that I've been around too long because I remember Penny, who's now serving her 30th year in the village, I remember combing her hair in kindergarten for school pictures. And Chad, Chad was here when I started, and I'm just, I'm so proud of both of you.
And I combed his hair.
It is my honor to present this achievement award for 20 years of service at the village of Majesty Park. It's outstanding, and we thank you for all the long hours. I know you, middle of the night, told us stuff, and it's tough. I do appreciate all your efforts on that. We do appreciate it.
Want to thank the village for 20 years of employment. It's been fun. Thank you.
Especially on those cold winter nights when it's snowing and...
Get your picture taken.
Picture. You can take your award out and hold it up.
Now, it's my honor to give Penny Miller this recognition for awards of service for 30 years. Wow. How many administrations have you been with?
Six.
Wow. That's a statement right there. The village has a total of, what, seven?
Yes.
So, wow. You're the rock. It's my honor to present this achievement award for 30 years of service, and there again, you probably can tell us quite a few stories.
How much time do you have?
What time does you want?
First of all, I got to tell you that that was before there were child labor laws. I was little when I started. A lot has happened in the 30 years, a lot of changes, but the changes, things that haven't changed were the needs of our residents, and that's what Chad and I have been here for. They're the reason we have jobs, is to provide for them. Been able to satisfy a lot of those calls, but some we just can't. I learned a long time ago that you can't make everybody happy, but we try. And so, I've been told, some people wouldn't vote for me. Thankfully, I've never lost an election. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Now, it's my honor to give the state of community for Majesty Park address. I've been mayor for over two years, and once again, Mother Nature is making her presence known. The last year, we had wind and hail damage in the village, and this year in March, we had record flooding events that affected over 200 homes. The village is in close communication with federal and state representatives. As grant fundings become available for the village, we will make applications for future buyout programs. I would like to thank the village staff and all the residents, volunteers, various agencies for their help assisting with the flood event. The village has been awarded the distinguished budget presentation award from government finance officer associates for the third consecutive year. The village will be submitting the fiscal year 2020 budget for consideration in July. With transparency and clarity of our budget and sound auditing practices, I'm confident that the village's financial position is fairly and accurately presented. The village board approved a balanced fiscal year 2020 budget totaling $7,558,000 of expenditures and trending at a fiscal acceptable 5% increase over last year. The result is a healthy, unassigned fund balance estimated to be 70% or better at the end of fiscal 2020. The village is in its final year of third three-year commitment to utilizing a portion of the video gambling revenue to abate housing blight. The village partnered with the Winnebago County Health Department to remove two abandoned properties. In addition, the village received two years of grant funding from IDA totaling $178,000 to address the baited properties. In total, 17 abandoned properties have been demolished, and two more are likely to occur in the next year. The village utilized $361,000 of grant funding from IDA to rehab eight single-family homes. Additional grant is in the works, and when awarded, is anticipated to rehab additional 10 homes. Scott, Cadet, and Juniper improvements, total reconstruction of Scott Lane between Huron and Juniper, stormwater management improvements for Scott Lane between Harlem and Juniper, Cadet Road and Juniper, and pavement replacement on Juniper, Cadet, and Scott Lane. Project cost was $1,070,000 paid by the road fund. Victory Lane improvements, total reconstruction of Victory Lane between Roosevelt and Majesty Landing subdivision. Project cost was $285,000 paid by the road funds. 2018 pavement maintenance program, resurfacing of over three miles of roadway costs $610,000 paid by the road funds. Orlando improvements, total reconstruction of Orlando between Storybrooke and Melbourne costs $280,000 paid by road funds. Quantum Court improvements, constructions of a new 900-foot roadway, sanitary sewer, water main, and new concrete payment costs $970,000 paid by TIF funds. The retail and industrial sectors of our business are strong, and many of our corporate citizens have taken steps over the past to grow. We all also welcome a number of new businesses in Majesty Park over the past year, and I'm excited to tell you about our recent success and several newer ventures on the horizon of making investments in Majesty Park. First and foremost, the village felt it was important to recognize these businesses who have sustained their presence in our community because they are truly a part of our foundation. Bada Dozen is celebrating 25,000, 25 years of business this year and continues to deliver products that we have known and loved. In addition to custom cakes and confections they serve at their store, Bada Dozen can also be found in many convenience stores throughout the region. The past year, we also recognized Gil's Diner for over 30 years of ownership with superb management, great food, and quality service. And finally, we recognize North Park Pharmacy for providing important pharmaceutical products and services to Majesty Park and surrounding areas for over 65 years. It's been my pleasure to honor these long-term investors in our business communities, and we look forward to enjoying their products and services for many years to come. This past year, the village has seen a number of manufacturers take huge steps as a result of need to grow. Quantum Design has constructed a 100,000-square-foot headquarters at Park 90 and recently moved into their new facility. Quantum Design is a leader in design and manufacturing of automotive control systems, and we are pleased to welcome them to Majesty Park. Henick recently finished two building additions in Majesty Park to add over 25,000 square foot of manufacturing and office space. Henick designs and builds machine protection systems for companies all over the world. They recently acquired additional property adjacent to the existing facilities for future building additions, which they are very excited about. You may have heard that the Spyder Company is moving in the former Menards Building at North Second and Route 173. The village, with the help of R A E D C, has assisted this important regional employer in finding a location to expand local and occupied building that has been vacant for over 10 years. We are excited to welcome them to Majesty Park this year. The village continues to nurture partnerships with several developers who have done excellent job in producing a vibrant shopping corridor filled with essential products and services for our residents. Over the past year, we have welcomed Hobby Lobby, Casey's General Store, ATI Physical Therapy, Mod Pizza, and New Improved KFC, Hardest Credit Union, to the 173 business corridor. McDonald's, Taco Bell, and Target have made improvements to their stores this past year, further supporting the strength of the 173 corridor. Also not far from the 173 corridor, Twisted Two-Up Events and Banquets have been, have construction on a new banquet, boutique banquet facility for small events on Burden Road. Owner Dev Manzullo is excited to improve area residence with a quaint venue to celebrate party, weddings, and other special events. I'm excited to announce that Freddie Frozen Custard will be opening a location next year, and we can't wait for them to open in front of Lowe's, the lot in front of Lowe's. The Majesty Town Center has been, its share of changes over the past year. We are excited about the direction that the center is going. The TLC Assisted Living at the south end of the town center is under construction and is on schedule to open this fall. The three-story, 54,000-square-foot building will be an incredible asset and will serve a precious and important segment of our community, our seniors. The outlets along North Second Street at the town center are home to two new restaurants, Lost Pancho's and Baking Grounds North. If you haven't been to either one of these places, I strongly encourage you to give them a try. Not only do they have menus with variety, but they have quality foods and drinks that are second to none. I'm pleased and honored to announce that the former J.C. Pennies building that the village acquired in 2015 will be completely occupied. Thanks to the efforts of administration and staff, this past year, the village leased four remaining spaces in J.C. Pennies building to PCI Pharmaceuticals, TLC Assisted Living, and Menta Academy, in addition to a maximum performance that opened in 2017. Each of these businesses have been an important part of the revitalization that the village has aimed to achieve in the town center by acquiring this building. All in all, it's been a very incredible year for business and business development in Majesty Park. The village hosted a third annual Touch the Truck Trunk and Treat event. It was a beautiful fall day, and over 3,000 kids plus their parents attended this free family event held at the Majesty Town Center. The village is hosting their free family movie night out twice a month in June, July, and once in August. North Park Fire will provide popcorn, and Meyer will provide the water. The movie night's dates will be Wednesday, June 5th with Wonder, June 19th showing Small Foot, both starting at 8:00 p.m., July 3rd starts at Stubby, and July 17th is Zoo, will start at 8:15. And the last movie of the summer will be Wednesday, August 7th, and the movie will be Mary Poppins Returns, starting at 8:00 p.m. We hope a lot of families will take advantage of these free events. I don't have time to list everything that has happened, but I am, I am attempted to highlight various aspects, including business growth, financial responsibility, infrastructure, and community events. When all these parts work together, we have a well-balanced community that is attractive to business and residents alike. I'd like to thank the entire village staff for all their help and support in my second term as mayor. I said this last year, and I think it bears repeating, the success of Majesty Park is truly a group effort, with all departments working together, one goal, making Majesty Park a great place to live, work, and play. In conclusion, it's been a very exciting and busy time, and I look forward to even more positive things coming in the near future. Continuing on with administrative reports, next would be attorney Tom Green.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have no report tonight.
Thank you. Next would be village administrator Tim Savage.
Thank you. Lieutenant Delprah and the sheriff would join me at the podium. I have a quick presentation. So, in early March of this year, we began seeing forecasts from the National Weather Service that the river was going up to levels that were going to equal and maybe eclipse 2,000 feet in this period. And we quickly learned that that was coming true. We assembled a team downtown in the sheriff's office to start addressing some of the flooding that was occurring, not only in Chadney Park, but countywide. It was at that time that the sheriff saw the wisdom in setting up a command post, incident command center, to respond to the flooding countywide. And my suggestion, I wanted Pete to step up as incident commander, which he quickly accepted without hesitation, so that he would step into that role and help us get through the flooding. It was very, very early on, and it was going to take many hours at each time, and I've been attested firsthand, the sometimes level of frustration, the long hours, and everything that goes into coordinating agencies and response, and the really, firsthand in the past it takes to respond with flood, such as the one we had. We came out of it in very good shape, and very appreciative of Pete's help in heading that effort up. So, this is a commendation for exemplary service awarded to Lieutenant Delprah in recognition of outstanding contribution and coordination of a countywide recovery effort during the March 2019 Rockford Flood Event. Thank you, Pete.
The only thing I want to say is Pete really stepped up, and he's in a class right now on Staff in Command, which is a very, very intense class. He started in January, and all through that, and all through homework, he stepped up and did a great job, and still continued, and he's going to graduate now in about, well, June 14th, so we're almost to the end. So, he's been in class since January to June 14th, and he still was able to have his responsibilities here in Majesty Park and that incident commander. So, very nice job, buddy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Next would be Finance and Human Resource Manager Michelle Johansson.
No reports.
Thank you. Next would be Superintendent of Public Works Chad Hunter.
No report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Village Engineer from McMahon, Nick.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have two resolutions on the consent agenda tonight. Resolution 31-R-19 for Burden Road Reconstruction, and also Resolution 32-R-19 for the Gregory Road improvements. Both were approved at committee level, and we recommend their approval and passage here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be Harlem High School Student Liaison Hannah Herrera.
Thank you, Your Honor. These past few weeks at Harlem have been very busy with the school year coming to a close. On May 11th, we had the Vet Doc Gala, which the students from the Veteran Documentations class, they create documentaries of veterans, and they present them at this gala to their veterans and their families, and we had a very big turnout, and students and families were very happy with the documentaries that were created. These past few weeks, we also had the Environmental Club at Harlem High School. They were granted a grant for creating a prairie garden on the Harlem High School property, and this past Tuesday, I, along with some other students, were out there planting the plants, and we're very excited to see them bloom throughout the summer and into the fall. And lastly, the girls' Harlem Track Team has been making history. They won conference, they placed first for track, and then they went to state, or they went to sectionals, and then they went to state, and there, two girls qualified for finals. They placed second and seventh in disc and shot put, and in Harlem history, track had never gone to finals before, so we are very excited for that.
Very good news. Yeah. Thank you. Next would be Public Safety Supervisor Lieutenant Pete Delprah.
Thank you, Your Honor. First off, thank you, everyone. That's a kind gesture. I appreciate it. Mr. Savage can attest to some struggles that came along with that flood, so. Couple of reports real quick. The month of April, the sheriff's police, to back up, I apologize that it wasn't out last month. For the month of April, sheriff's police made 528 traffic stops. Ten of those were for DUI. Made 713 community contacts and tagged 20 vehicles for being inoperable. At the end of next week, all of the deputies of Majesty Park will have gone through their 40-hour training, their yearly training. It'll be nice to get that wrapped up. An announcement to make regarding the Strong House, which is going to be at 8:25 Marie. There'll be a question and answer session on Wednesday, May 22nd. That's this Wednesday night at 6:30 p.m. The meeting will be at the Harlem Middle School at 7:35 Windsor in Loves Park, and anyone and everyone is invited to be there regarding that. Lastly, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Memorial Day and make it safe. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next will be committee and trustee reports. Does any trustee have a report this evening? Trustee Smith.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight, the Administration Finance Committee met and recommended three resolutions for approval and sent them to the board, two for tonight and one for the June 3rd meeting. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any other trustee? Trustee Beck?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight, the Public Improvement and Safety Committee met and approved three resolutions with a positive recommendation, two to the board this evening and one to the June 3rd meeting.
Thank you. Any other trustee reports? Hearing none, next would be Consent Agenda. Would the staff present all items considered on the Consent Agenda, please?
Yes, thank you. The Consent Agenda consists of Item A, Ordinance 26-19, amending Chapter 19 to continue municipal electricity and gas utility tax, final reading. Item B, Ordinance 22-19, granting a special use permit for a school in the Commercial General District at 8702 North Second Street, Unit D, first reading. Item C, Ordinance 23-19, granting a zoning map amendment from the Commercial General District to the Light Industrial District at 10253 North Second Street, first reading. Item D, Ordinance 35-19, amending Chapter 7 of the Village Code, establishing authorized signers to sign checks and maintain village bank accounts, first reading. Item E, Ordinance 36-19, approving the purchase of 26 Liberty Boulevard for $10,000, first reading. Item F, Resolution 28-R-19, approval of the final plat of the townhome. Item E, Ordinance 36-19, Approving the Purchase of 26 Liberty Boulevard for $10,000, first reading. Item F, Resolution 28-R-19, Approval of the Final Plaid of the Town Homes of North Pier Subdivision. Item G, Resolution 29-R-19, Authorizing a Joint Funding Agreement for the Latham Park River Gauge between the Village and U S G S for the period of April 1st, 2019 through March 31st, 2020 in the amount of $5,500. Item H, Resolution 31-R-19, Awarding the Contract to Northern Illinois Service Company for Reconstructing Portions of Burden Road in the Amount of $287,628. Item I, Resolution 32-R-19, Awarding the Contract to Northern Illinois Service Company for Constructing an Extension of Gregory Road in the Amount of $416,844.93. Item J, Resolution 33-R-19, Awarding the Contract for Demolition, Framing, Drywall Work and Related Improvements at 8702 North Second Street, Unit D, to Elite Building and Remodeling, not to Exceed $46,086.70. And Item K, Resolution 38-R-19, Awarding the Contract for the Installation of an HVAC System and Related Improvements at 8702 North Second Street, Unit D, to Miller Engineering, not to Exceed $110,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any items a trustee would like removed from the Consent Agenda to be considered separately? Trustee Smith?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to see Item A removed from the Consent Agenda. I think it's important we have another staff report on this and have a roll call vote.
Thank you. Any other items want removed? Okay, so Item A, Ordinance 26-19, Amending Chapter 19 to Continue Municipal Electrical and Gas Utility Tax, second reading, will be removed from Consent Agenda and considered under unfinished business. Entertained a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Submit.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Will the clerk please take a roll call?
Trustee Smith.
Aye.
Kid.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey's absent, Beck.
Aye.
Sykes.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, and one absent.
Consent Agenda has been approved. Next would be unfinished business. I'll entertain a motion to approve A, Ordinance 26-19, Amending Chapter 19 to Continue Municipal Electrical and Gas Utility Tax, second reading.
Submit.
Second. Got a motion and a second. May I have staff report, please?
I'll start the staff report. I've done that at committee and at the last board meeting. This ordinance is consistent with the discussions had during the budgetary process. This will, extension of these funds or allowing the village to continue to receive these funds will allow the village to continue to budget for the infrastructure improvements at the fairly impressive level. We've been able to do that in the past. So, this will remove the sunset on that, on that source of funds and continue it until further action by the village board. I'll turn it over to staff now to give maybe a little more specifics on how those funds have been received and spent.
Thank you. So, the history on the, on the tax is that it was implemented in March of 2013 with a seven-year sunset and is set to expire December 31st of this year. At the time, or in that ordinance, it was specifically called out that at least 55% of the proceeds would be used for existing roads and related infrastructure with also some funding going to police services, protective services. The prediction at that time, and which is also held, held true, is that it would generate approximately $1.1 million annually in revenue. All in, over the total of seven years, we are estimating that the total amount received will be $7.9 million, of which $7 million or six point, or 64% will have been spent on existing roads exceeding the 55% requirement. $800,000 spent on new roads. $600,000 was spent on the Alpine Path and $1.5 million or approximately 18% spent on public safety. We do have a low-income rebate feature within the existing ordinance. I believe that is carried through to the, to the new draft. And that will pay out approximately $12,000 or $2,000 annually as applied for by those residents requesting that. Going forward, I think as was stated, the proceeds will be applied 100% for the maintenance, reconstruction, and related infrastructure for existing roads. And future plans for the, the funding, the immediate plans are the partial reconstruction and overlay of Harlem and Al- Harlem Roads and Alpine Roads and also reconstruction of Forest Hills Road and also ongoing maintenance slash overlays and reconstruction of residential streets. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
And one additional point that I should have made was, at the request of the trustees, we did add during the process a section that requires that staff annually during the budgetary process provide a report of revenue and expenditures regarding the proceeds received and that report will be presented at a board meeting. So, you'll get an annual report. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Trustee Kid.
Just to let you know, Mike Meyer, Mr. Cabello, and myself, we talked approximately 100 to 100 and a quarter citizens in the village of Machesney Park. We found three people that were for keeping the utility tax. We did bring up the concerns about Alpine Road, Harlem Road, and sharing the concerns with the village, saying that we could repair these roads. Last week, I came to Tim and the village president, Steve Johnson, asked them to sweep up the road because it gives the appearance that the village of Machesney Park is purposely not keeping up with maintenance on the road. They assured us that they weren't and the roads still haven't been swept up and there are big chunks of concrete on Alpine Road. Secondly, I think the sunset clause, we should finish it, go to the people and ask for a referendum. I am willing to compromise and say, hey, we'll continue the utility tax for two more years and then fix Alpine Road, fix Harlem Road, but I think it should go to the people for a referendum, just like the one cent sales tax was for the roads. And a friendly reminder, we do have a motor fuel tax used for the road and we also have the one cent sales tax used for the roads. And now we have a third tax. Maybe some of my colleagues don't understand or didn't realize, but we are raising taxes to $151 per plate in the state of Illinois and our citizens are being taxed out of our ears. Mr. Beck said, hey, the annual thing, he put it in there. I think it's great that we talk about it in the future. However, it becomes rubber stamped. If I'm out of office and people get moved, who's to say now it doesn't become a rubber-stamped road tax just because we talk about it? I think it should end and revisit, revisit with the people. And the last thing I would like to share is we should be honest with ourselves and really help out our citizens and do what they would like. I understand it would be a tough time. I understand that it would be a tough sale to the citizens for a referendum, but I, I think we can do it. So, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any other comments? Trustee Beck.
Well, I, you know, don't want to take exception, exception with, with Mr. Kid, but, you know, the citizens of the village of Chesapeake Park and each one of the districts elects that one, one individual to represent them. And in my district, I haven't heard one person complain about the fact that their deteriorated, dilapidated roads got fixed, that nine to $11 a month they were paying on their phone bill and the other eight or nine dollars on the gas bill. They haven't made one complaint to me regarding that. So, I'm supporting this, the safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Sykes.
Thank you, Your Honor. I had a meeting with people in my district over another situation, but this was brought up. And out of the probably 24 to 30 people that were there, one person actually said he'd rather pay a property tax, but the rest were in agreement that the small amount that's being paid on the electric and on the gas bills have done wonders for our roads and in keeping them up. So, I'll be voting yes for it and I do agree, you know, we'll do this year by year, we're going to bring it up, it's going to be proven where the money's going, it's not like it's going anywhere else. And I think we can, we can, you know, trust ourselves and staff is doing an excellent job keeping it up, so I'll be voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee.
Your Honor, I asked staff to take this off the Consent Agenda for that exact reason. I would like to hear the comments of all the other trustees and I too will be supporting it this evening. I think it's important that we are fiscally conservative and I appreciate that we do not charge a property tax, but at the end of the day, we have to have income to make this a nice community. I share some of the concerns Mr. Kid has, but I think the report that Mr. Beck proposed is a win and I appreciate that and I second what Mr. Kid says, where he's viewing this on a yearly basis. We're elected to make the decisions on behalf of the constituents and I too had a lot of tough conversations and came away with no one saying that they were not in favor of this after discussion. So, I'd be voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Kid.
Your Honor, I would like to make two more quick statements. We changed the rules on the utility tax for 100% of the funding to go for the roads, which is a wonderful thing. Who's to say next year, at the next yearly evaluation, we don't go 100% for a new village hall or buy another building and change the utility tax for a different reason? That's worrisome amongst several of the people that I've talked to. And the other thing is, and Mr. Beck is absolutely right, he probably didn't hear from his constituents very much. And my reason why I think they haven't heard from you or they haven't reached out to you because when I called the local media stations, the newspaper, the TV station, the radio stations, I asked them, did we do a press release to inform the citizens that we were going to do this? And the media stations, the news station and the radio station said they don't recall one being sent and they don't, they didn't hear one or see one. So, when I asked them that question, they don't recall. So, was one sent so we can get the word out? And I didn't receive an email with a copy of one saying that it was sent.
Any further comments? Seeing none, will the clerk please take a roll call?
Trustee Kid.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey's absent, Beck.
Aye.
Sykes.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Five ayes. Five ayes. One nay, one absent.
Okay, so Resolution 26-19 has passed first, second, reading. Next would be move business having none. Next would be public comment. Is there anyone in the audience would like to address the board for the good of the village? Seeing none, next would be adjournment. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Submit.
Second.
A motion and a second. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.